All right, we're gonna get started. I am gonna fill in for Jessica until her arrival. So I will welcome everybody. Instructions on exiting the building in the event of the emergency, you can go out that door. Go down that way, set of stairs there, take a right, set of stairs there. Agenda, two additions, deletions, or changes in order of agenda items. Hearing none, we'll move on to number three. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. I thought we had somebody online. I thought I saw Sandy Dooley.
Sandy was there.
Yeah. Tim, you got anything over there?
No comment from the room.
All right. We're moving fast. Number four, announcements and staff report. Any commissioner announcements? No, all right.
None.
Staff?
Just one quick thing to add, an exciting, um, uh, next stage of our city center becoming city center is that the daycare in one twelve Garden Street, uh, the large building of, I don't mind, um, Healthy Living is officially open. So, um,
Oh, great.
Six feet.
What for the?
One.
Somewhere around there, yeah. The daycare is open.
Well, they're here, yes.
Yeah.
You can pass through now, but only go there.
Mm-hmm, from that end, yes.
Yes. Yeah, um, so there's, uh, from a, so that's the daycare from a transportation perspective, the city has an agreement with the major development in that area that, uh, Garden Street will be open to Market Street no later than September first. Um, so there's still a lot of construction vehicles in that area, so they've now opened access to that building from the Trader Joe's side, but only to that building.
I'll sneak through there occasionally. I said sneak.
I declare my sneaks.
Right, now everyone knows your sneak.
Yeah. On the record, Michael. All right.
I'm sneaking on the record.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, on to number five, LDR amendments, discussion of full draft of proposed LDR amendments. It looks like we had a pretty light attendance at this meeting last time, so, uh, there were a number of change, small changes, it looks like. Um, number of small changes. I don't know.
Yeah, so the.
How you, you guys wanna go over them and then we talk about them, or how would you like to?
Uh, sure, so the ones that are in the memo, um, are a few things that came out of the last meeting. The last meeting, there was only four, there were only four commissioners, so we, um, drafted some changes, but included them as red, uh, as red line documents, um, for everyone to see how those were both how they were dealt with and what exactly was dealt with. Um, and then, uh, it's, the rest of the LDRs are open for any other further comments, especially from those who are not here, um, to provide any other feedback you have on the rest of the document. But just to go through the couple of things that were changed, um, after the last meeting, there was some appetite to clarify that there's a difference between smaller fitness facilities, yoga studio, Orange Theory, um, the smaller side of some of the more, you know, Planet Fitness, but smaller ones, not the giant ones, um, potentially are a different thing and draw a different crowd kind of per, that kind of related to the building type than something like the Edge does. And the line that we landed on in that discussion was the difference between the facilities available. So if something is offering courts, a pool, um, running track, things like that, that are large scale um, amenities in the fitness facility, then it would be considered, um, indoor recreation. And then the smaller ones would be consumer facing commercial and they'd be in the same category as some other things. Are you looking for an umbrella?
Thank you.
Right there.
I like the, like, uh, Planet Fitness.
Would be a smaller one, yeah.
Can I ask a quick, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't here for that, quick question?
Yeah.
So the larger ones, like the Edge, they're in general commercial now?
Yeah. That was the idea, because, and this was a conversation that was had mostly about separating the two, two things, um, for kind of a density of users, like if there's a tennis court in an indoor facility, there's two or four people using that tennis court. If that same amount of square footage was, you know, a bunch of treadmills, that'd be a lot more people, um, and a lot more sort of coming and going. The other thing was sort of the style of the building that the, these different facilities are in. You can easily slot, you know, an Orange Theory Fitness on, um, Shelburne Road or something like that where uh, something like the Edge is much more likely, if it changed uses, that it would change to something that was um, warehousing, manufacturing, you know, something that is a different use, it's not gonna likely change to a restaurant. So it was more thinking about like, these are kind of, they're both fitness related, but they're different enough uses that they are driven into different kinds of commercial spaces.
We have an interesting example, um, of a, a conversion that just happened, which was the Palestine Movie Theater becoming Elevator Two.
Mm-hmm.
And it seems like, scale wise and, you know, activity wise, a movie theater and that are prob, I mean, it's different times a day that they're operating, but very similar in a lot of ways. I mean, setting aside that one is sitting and one is the exact opposite of sitting. Although for attending sports events, but.
It, it, it just came to me because it seems to me that even larger fitness places are still consumer facing retail. Because they're counting customers to come in there, so I don't know how, and I know there was a note that you need to change something in general commercial to make that fit a little bit, that I don't know.
Yeah, so one thing that was in general commercial is it was written as, um, you can have customers come, but the, on average, it's no more than the realm of ten a day, so it's more like, you know, you're a, uh, a vendor for a small clothing company, you're gonna have maybe a couple of people come and go during the day. Um, so that was something that was discussed about the difference between fitness facilities and general commercial facilities, but clearly there are a lot more sort of comings and goings, there's more like you'd be there for an hour and then you'd leave again and it turns over. Um, but the concern was if you kept it, if you allowed a large scale fitness facility that was more like a a Planet Fitness style or, you know, it's gonna be very two thousands, but an Equinox, like that large fitness facility that has all these things in it, that that is not the kind of use that you would want to have in some of the more industrial areas at that scale. But something like the, it didn't succeed, but there was a pickleball facility over near the Tech Park area that, that was okay in that, in that area because of the scale of the building and it wasn't drawing as many people as it would have if it was a bunch of treadmills. Um, so it was definitely a lot of discussion and it was definitely a lot of back and forth, and it's not a perfect solution by any means.
I was just trying to figure out the.
Yeah, 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 but that was sort of the logic behind it, is the sort of style of the building, the scale of the building. Um, it would be sort of less parking per square footage of building being used, um, than something that's a denser sort of fitness use. Um, and, but then also the flip side is not lumping, the keeping some fitness facilities in the consumer facing commercial, like having to separate them because you do wanna allow Nine Rounds or Orange Theory or Yoga Studio or something to be in these small, um, commercial spaces. So it's, it's definitely the different ways you slice it, it's, you know, you win or you lose in different directions, um, so it's something that we're giving a try.
Yes. Can I just ask about parking for that? So when you change, um, for example, um, the Edge, they've moved a bunch of stuff around, so the parking in what once was pretty sparse is now really full all the time. And, um, I mean, in my opinion, they've outgrown their parking space.
Which Edge are you talking about?
Both of them.
Okay, I'm just, there's two in South Burlington, they're sort of different facilities, yeah.
But they, but they moved, they, they moved them around.
Yep.
To, for the use, um, so they became more intense. You know, the one on Farrell Street used to be mostly tennis.
Mm-hmm.
And now it's a huge fitness thing and just a little tennis. My understanding is they're taking out one of the tennis courts for some, um, uh, what, um, what do you call it? Not wastewater.
Stormwater.
Stormwater and maybe adding some parking, I don't know, but I'm just curious as these businesses evolve, what happens with the change in parking demand?
Yeah.
Had ever considered, or we just say, well, you know, you were built thirty years ago with seventy-five parking spots and that's it.
Yeah. I'd say there's, there's two things that came to mind when you were, when you were talking. One is not related to parking, I just wanna talk about it first, so that's the thing that's that's a big sort of glitch in this system, is that kind of situation where say it's, it's ninety percent tennis and you go, well, that's tennis. And then it sort of over time evolves to something else, and when does that switch flip from being the sort of indoor recreation where it's mostly tennis to being mostly a very large gym with one tennis court or whatever it is. So that's, that is a flaw in the system, um, that we weren't really able to figure out one way or the other. Um, and then the, the parking, um, there is no minimum parking for commercial uses, so they can decide to get rid of what, whatever parking they'd like to. Um, my understanding, um, is they're kind of making those pro and con decisions about, you know, what's going to, you know, maybe they say, oh, half my parking lot is empty most of the time, so I'm gonna use that for something else.
Mm-hmm.
And then at five o'clock every day, every parking spot is completely full.
Sure.
They're kind of having to make those, those decisions as a business, um, and the city is not necessarily getting involved with that. That said, if they change some part of their use and they have to go to site plan to change, like they, they did something and they changed half of it to housing or something else, and they changed the use, they would, there would be traffic related impacts, so they'd have to go through our whole process for that, but that's not necessarily parking, that's sort of traffic generation based on different uses.
Because it used to be also a problem on the, um, Twin Oaks Campus. They, they would park up and down the street, so it's really hard sometimes to both get out of the parking lot and see if someone was coming, um, or just get around the corner safely.
I think that at a, at a really high level, I think that's an interesting example of where, you know, as we see, you know, in city center and beyond, more infill, where, um, there's other city policies that are probably gonna have to catch up to, you know, maybe that area by the, um, the Edge on, um, Kennedy Grindside, Twin Oaks side, might need to have straight parking spaces and areas shown where parking cannot be in the future.
Uh-huh.
Um, and the city, you know, may have to evolve to make sure that the roadway where it's designed to have parking spaces allows cars and where it's designed to have a sharp corner, that that becomes a no parking area. Um, not to, not to speak for our public works department, but this is, to me, that's where some of these conversations will start to go.
Uh-huh.
Um, and we're in city center, we're starting a parking management plan, so.
Okay, well, that would be good, because I, you know, it's, that has been an issue for a really long time and nothing was done. Then they, when they did reconfigure some things, it seemed to
Yeah.
help address that.
Yeah.
But then they put all the outdoor pickleball courts in, so in the summer.
Right.
It's probably gonna be packed again, but, you know.
They seem to do well, either way.
Yeah. Um.
I just wanna note that the chair is here, so I'm gonna seat the chair to the chair.
Oh, geez, I was hoping you'd finish the item.
There's only one.
That was my big.
I'm seating the chair.
That was my big plan, so I'm good. Yeah, sorry I'm late, I was the engineering thing, work thing. Um, okay, any other questions on this item?
And you're also welcome to have whatever discussion you may want about the, the way that it's, if you have opinions about how it's currently, like divided up.
Yeah, I think that's a good, so, you know, we're specifically talking about this change about the fitness facility, is, I mean, are people have more questions or are they feeling pretty comfortable with what you know, the staff change was following our last last meeting discussion.
Yeah, it is definitely one of those that's a, a stickier problem than some, that it was, it's very hard because fitness facilities as a as a category, you just call something a fitness facility, it can be anything from three hundred square feet to three hundred thousand square feet. And multiple floors and pools and tennis courts and outside fields or not, or, you know, there's a lot of different ways that something that is a category of a fitness facility could fall into. So it's hard to just say, oh, fitness facilities are fall into this consolidated category or this one.
I guess in the, uh, for all of these, but in this one in particular, as you're getting feedback over the next, you know, month or so, please feel free to share that feedback and share your updated thoughts on it. I think this is a, an ambitious project that you're taking on of trying to take, you know, dozens and dozens of uses and put them into some fewer categories and, and, uh, I've gotten really good feedback overall about the effort and there are some hard questions like this.
Cause we hadn't mentioned anything, uh, in relation to this about, but it, it all relates to transportation. I wondered about transportation impact fees, they don't really come into play unless there's a change of use, right? And, and now we're, if there's not gonna be a change of use because these facilities can fit almost anywhere, so if you have something like this that tends to generate large amounts of traffic just at early evening, it's when, early evenings and weekends is when most of the traffic happens. Um, is there any opportunity to discuss the transportation impact of, of, of those plans when they?
I think.
Yeah, cause I mean.
Yeah, I guess, I, I don't know the answer to this, but I guess I just wanna say like, my thinking on this was that these categories we're putting in, these things into would have kind of a similar impact, so if you're going sideways within the same category, but I guess I'm curious, that was what I was thinking, but I don't
Yeah.
that that's true.
I, I think that is, that is the effort and then, you know, up and down that, within a category, of course, that also would have
The scale.
the scale of it. I think, um, within that goal, if what you're seeing has a major misalignment with one subset, that's something to talk about, you know, so to Duncan's point, if, you know, if everything else about it feels like it fits into one category, but the number of users really feels like another category, that's a policy call to make and that's, that's okay, but I think we were trying to have it be pretty similar impacts within these categories, um, transportation being a significant one of those.
Well, it's not really different than a U-Mall, you know, which at Christmas time, pandemonium.
Right. And the U-Mall's an example, because the U-Mall falls as one category, so all the businesses can come and go and it just fits under one historically shopping mall category. You know, there's always variability on trips and traffic based on success too, right? A, a highly successful restaurant and a not successful restaurant in the same, um, otherwise equivalent, um, size could have a major, a pretty substantial difference in their trips and what we try to do is take national studies that are, um, right, in their actuals, um, national studies that give an average and.
And the same is true for wastewater, there's all sorts of things that we have to pick a, an average number for, and there's gonna be same, same example, a restaurant that is very successful is gonna use more wastewater likely on average than a very unsuccessful restaurant, cause they're not you know, washing dishes and cooking things and stuff. So you have to kind of play to, play to the middle on some of these things.
Okay, well, the out, the, um, the memo outlined some specific items that were brought up at our last meeting, but I know that not everyone was present, um, so I think that, you know, we can expand the discussion to, you know, kind of anything people wanna talk about in the, the whole draft. You know, beyond what the certain things we've brought up before.
Yeah, and I had a couple of things to also mention, and I can do that either now or I can do that after other discussion is had, which I must.
Does anyone have anything they wanna bring out first, or you wanna? Okay, go ahead, Kelsey.
So one is that, um, Article seven was unintentionally omitted from your packet. Um, it is the industri, it is the institutional agricultural and potentially something else section.
In.
Minnesota Polan Park is in, are also in that section. Um, the only change is a change that you, in there that is a change that you discussed in March, um, about a slight wording change requested by UVM um, in the standards for educational support facilities. So, um, I can put that language back up on the, on the screen if you'd like, or it was, um, presented to you and it was you know, Strappole okayed on the March eleventh meeting. So that was the only thing that changed in seven. Um, and then the, the other thing is that we received some feedback about the definition of long-term care facility. Um, and I would, I gotta.
That was Sandy's letter, right?
That was, that was Sandy's and then, um, we landed on kind of a, a work, a definition update. Um, Paul, can you, do you mind pulling that up? It's in the, um, staff additional edits folder.
Yep.
I still don't have a pen, I can borrow.
You go grab one.
I have, love my mask spray, but like nothing helpful.
Here's one.
Happened when I'm.
Just, I have two.
I just needed to bring up fancy purse for the first time in like a year.
Um, if that doesn't work, I have another one.
No, there's more.
Okay. I'm usually the one asking.
I did not win an award tonight. Be clear.
Not yet.
What?
Yeah.
You think I'll win an award later?
Did you get some, did you get a pen?
I did, um.
I have more pens.
I went to find one, yes.
All right, there's two more here.
No, I did have a project up for an award, but we, we won a landscape architecture award a few weeks ago, but not the engineering one. Very exciting.
Felicitatio.
Okay. Okay. So everything in regular text is what was there before, um, as required by the residents is crossed out. There's a verb tense crossed out, the word collective is replaced by the word congregate, I should have underlined congregate. And then, um, significant supportive services is in the second, third to last line. As an addition, it's underlined. And then finally, this definition excludes residential care homes as defined by state statute and group, group homes as defined also by state statute. So this is in response to some feedback from Sandy Dooley and her talking to the folks at Cathedral Square and, um, some concern that when we took some other terms, continuum of care facility, skilled nursing facility, congregate care facility, and we consolidated them into this one term, that it's sort of missed the nuance a little bit, that there was a little bit missing that we should add back in. Um, so this is what we landed on after, um, some emails with, with Sandy about. Yes, the word congregate there, so, yeah, underlined. Um, so this is where we landed, uh, the, the, this couple of things is that removing as required by the residents and, um, significant supportive services of the type listed above, those are, um, clarifying that it could be kind of the whole range, those are a little bit, little pieces of language that they felt more comfortable covered the whole range of these facilities from um, sort of senior living multi-unit facilities that have a little bit of services, supportive services, potentially a dining hall, potentially you know, social services, education, social events, things like that, through to, um, full, full-on nursing home care, so that's what was added. Um, residential care homes and it already had excluded group homes, but we added residential care homes cause those are two terms that are specifically defined in state statute and are regulated separately from these other kinds of, um, facilities. So that was the primary thing. Um, there is a related update that, um, with your blessing, I would like to make and that's um, in the inclusionary zoning section in Article eighteen, it refers to congregate care facilities being excluded from inclusionary zoning. So I'd just like to replace that with this.
So we're now saying long term.
So the, the, this definition will were.
Just the term.
So top congregate would be replaced by long term.
Yeah, and there might be a little bit of different references that need to be changed just to clean that up, but that would be the change in inclusionary zoning, would be to point to this definition, which we're using to replace those others. Cause for, actually similar reasons, we're talking about fit, fitness facilities, there's a lot of different forms that this kind of housing can take and there's a lot of different, you know, it has some of this, but not that, and it has all of this, but not this other thing. And there's a lot of different ways that facilities make their finances work by having different staff or having different programs or having different services available, having apartments versus rooms, like all sorts of different things, so when it was in our previous definition, kind of sliced up into different categories, um, it was artificially dividing, uh, what is one big category, but we just wanted, we needed to add these few tweaks as suggested by Sandy and Cathedral Square to make it clear that that's what this is doing.
And it's, it's subject, it's a, it's a field that's evolving.
Yes, also.
Pretty substantially too, so our definition that we had
You know, traditional nursing home care.
over the past twenty years are changing rapidly.
Is not often a standalone facility anymore, it's often associated with other, sort of.
This is change in the, in the current language.
Everything that is in regular font, I'm sorry, it's in.
No, it is in eighteen, does it refer to this definition?
No, because eighteen was not otherwise changed for this meeting, so I will change it, um, because eighteen wasn't touched between last meeting and this meeting, but I'll put it in.
So, so if we would make a motion, we need to specifically say to add this.
And to cha, to update eighteen as required.
Um, does anyone up here have a question? Before I go to the audience? Um, Sandy, you wanna go ahead?
Is my audio on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify clarify that in Article eighteen, the independent living arrangements along with significant supportive services are covered by inclusionary zoning. None of the other categories of long-term care are subject to inclusionary zoning, so I just wanna make sure you understand that. There was a very strong desire to have the independent living, essentially senior apartment houses with some services that to be included in inclusionary zoning as it is if you read what's there. I just wanted to say that.
So by saying that we don't need to change anything, you're just helping translate it for us?
I haven't, I haven't seen what, uh, what Kelsey wants to do, but she said, or somebody I think maybe a commissioner said, oh, that's exempt from, uh, inclusionary zoning, and I just wanted to clarify that the independent living arrangements are not exempt.
Okay.
So, independent living arrangements still under long-term care facility? I guess, I guess I'm starting to.
Well, I, if you want, I think you could put long-term care facility and then explain that it's only the independent living arrangements are subject to it.
Country. I'm confused.
Subject to inclusionary zoning.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm not clear.
I'm really confused.
Yeah.
But the definition which talked about.
So it's drafted, they get merged in for the purposes of elsewhere, right, Kelsey?
Yeah.
But in the, in Article eighteen, it's clear that congregate care is included in inclusionary, something is not.
To, today it is, independent living under congregate care is a rental unit and subject to it today. Correct?
I think that's.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I, but, so Kelsey, you're proposing, uh, where, B where it says congregate care, that would be replaced by, what was the other term, long term?
So I was proposing that all long-term care facilities would be exempted from inclusionary zoning. That is not what Sandy is saying. Sandy is saying that congregate care as a subtype of inclusion, of long-term care facility should have inclusionary zoning apply.
And that would be a major policy change. Um, seniors have as much, or maybe not as much, but they have a challenge finding affordable living set, arrangements too, so if you had a place that did a thirty-unit apartment building for seniors that had services, some services, the idea was that twenty percent of them should be affordable under the inclusionary. It's really a proactive way to try to maintain some affordability for seniors.
What does it say now?
Now.
Well, and paired with that now, congregate, is it defined, are they defined differently separately today? Or does it only break it out in here?
They're defined separately.
Okay, so that's the challenge is that the use, there's two different uses today, congregate care and.
Continuum of care facility, skilled nursing facility, there's at least.
But they're all allowed in the same place.
Once we're gonna come back to chapter eighteen anyway, but you said we're not dealing with it right now.
I think we're dealing with it right now.
Yeah, we hope we have to deal with it.
We've decided to deal with it right now.
We are.
Cause it's part of the.
This is the only thing that was is changing is because of the reference here to congregate care.
Um.
So it sounds like your choices would be either to exempt all of it under the long-term care care category. Or possibly figure out how to create a subcategory within it, which is.
Within it.
Creates its own challenges, but.
Within article eighteen? Within the use, so the the two, the two options that I see, which are just restating what he said. Are um take the long-term care facility as a, as a term that replaces all previous terms and then.
As the, sorry, that's the U.
As the use and then exempt long-term care facilities from inclusionary zoning. That's one option. The other option is I think you can still have long-term care facility as the defined use. And keep our current definition of congregate care facility as a subtype of the use for the purposes of article eighteen.
And that would be the only.
Yes.
Kind of use for that would require.
Yes, that would be the only time that someone who comes in and says, hi, I wanna do a long-term care facility. We would have to say, are you gonna be a congregate care facility or not, or anything else? For purposes of inclusionary zoning only.
Right, so for purposes of where it's allowed, it would be exactly the same.
Yes.
But for affordability, it would have its sort of a.
It it's option two, kind of maintaining the status quo regardless of affordability.
Yes.
So it's so currently congregate care is included in inclusionary zoning.
Yes. Yes.
So for us to take that out, it's a pretty big change, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm leaning that way certainly.
It's also something that.
Yeah. I'm I'm, yeah, I'm I'm leaning towards not making a policy change here.
Yeah, that that, cause that's a pretty major change, I mean, we were, our senior population is not shrinking.
Yeah.
Yep. No, no, what I, what I would not want to do is have it be two different defined uses. But I think it works out legally to have the sort of umbrella use and then say for inclusionary zoning purposes, congregate care as defined. Keep the definition that's currently in there is.
Requires.
Requires inclusionary zoning.
And that would be the only one.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds like you've got agreement.
Okay.
Around around the table on that.
Sandy, are you nodding your head too?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you for noticing this.
Um. Not for this update, but um I would suggest maybe as we do sort of general maintenance of the regulations over the next year or so. Um knowing that there's a lot of changes happening in this world of um long-term care. Whether our tools that require that for the portion that are um congregate, that there be, you know, uh uh legal restrictions on it. May be challenging to the um uh flexibility that they have to have X number of units available for. Independent living versus assisted care versus skilled nursing, knowing that this field is evolving, we may wanna sort of explore that a little bit. And make sure that we're allowing them to do what they need to do to meet our seniors population, but not for.
That is not it today.
Not it today.
Like do something like register the type of unit within the building for inclusionary or something like that, yeah.
You just need to, it just needs, there needs, it is an opportunity for further.
Need to be thought behind it.
Yeah.
But not, not.
Yeah, no.
Not a very day problem.
Okay.
Next June.
Right. Well, I don't like that you picked up on, we put, we have our public hearings in July, I don't know, it's happened three years in a row. Public hearings in July for various things, so. Hmm.
It's not the target.
And there's nobody around?
It is not intentional, it just has happened three times in a row, the city plan and then two rounds of L E R amendments. Anyway, moving on.
Other things.
Yeah, other thing, was there something else you wanted to talk through?
Um yeah, so the only, the other thing is uh we've been discussing a few things with U V M. Um in the table of uses, we removed in the previous table, the currently effective table. There were a bunch of footnotes and subtypes and all these things for in the institutional agricultural area. Um where they could do certain things like um restaurant or something else that, but only if it was an educational support facility. So it said permitted with sub, with footnote eleven. Footnote eleven said only allowed as an educational support facility, so it has to be in support of the educate, of a post-secondary educational use. Um we cleaned it up by removing that and then just allowing educational support facility as a permitted use in the I A. Um we have had a few discuss, a few email discussions with them. Um in our opinion, that was opening up what they could do as an educational support facility and was more in line with what we were doing with other uses. Sort of removing these artificial lines between a restaurant and a short-order restaurant and things like that, that is the purpose of the rest of the things that we're doing. Um they see it a little bit differently, um they're, they are concerned that a future D R B at some point. Could interpret that to have narrowed what they can do as an educational support facility. Because it doesn't specifically call out restaurant and retail facility and research thing and other stuff that's in that list. Um so back and forth with them today, they are, we are both comfortable with the planning commission moving these. Um amendments forward for public hearing and then we'll be still discussing the little tweaks. It'll be one version or the other that come to the same conclusion that is more or less the status quo, you can do what you could do before, we're just how making.
Footnote eleven still applies for now.
Footnote eleven has, is removed for commercial uses, it's still included for group quarters in place of worship and that's part of the issue. Um. So all that to be said, the intention is that U V M will be able to do what U V M was able to do before. Um potentially a little bit more because they don't have to make the argument about if they're a restaurant or a short-order restaurant, it's just an educational support facility. Or alternatively, we put something back in specifically about, you know, consumer-facing commercial small is permitted with footnote eleven as an educational su- support facility. So that's a thing that we need to work out with them, kind of back and forth.
So long story short, they're okay with um it advancing to public hearing as presented. They slash, we may have some tweaks that don't fundamentally change the policy, but um uh address their concerns.
Yeah.
Good.
The others also, we look at them carefully. The some, I mean, sometimes they look like, oh, that's a little, you know, tweak and it has.
Yeah.
Right, and certainly.
Later impact than we imagine.
Right, and certainly if they have a different opinion than staff, we will give them the opportunity to present directly to you, our goal is to have good policy for the city.
Right. Okay.
Also are we widening their options at all, just?
So in my opinion, it does, because it doesn't have to, it's the same reason that we've been doing all these other things, these kind of. Uses that previously were on the kind of edge cases or in between the listed uses would be easier to be considered an educational support facility. More or less if they came, on the way it's written, if they came in and argued to a D R B and the D R B agreed that something was a facility in support of edu- of post-secondary education. They could do it, um in my opinion, but that's my interpretation, they have a different interpretation of the same language and that's totally reasonable. Um so we'll see. Um the other thing is that there is the um. Centennial Woods Way is currently a, the driveway to the Doubletree. It goes to that, the four-way intersection in front of, between the Doubletree and Staples Plaza. Um it is currently the edge of the Doubletree parking lot. And then continues to a little connector street that goes towards Centennial Woods, um that connects to the road by the police station on U V M's property. Um on one version of our official map, it was shown as an existing path.
Current official map. Current adopted.
Yeah, what did I say?
No, just clarified.
Oh, current adopted official map, it was showing as an existing path. On the city center sort of sub-map of the official map, it was showing as an existing street. Um on the draft official map that Paul's showing, um we have put it in as a um proposed or planned right-of-way, street right-of-way. And they are, they just had some questions about that, that they wanted further clarification, so.
It's the green.
It is the, the black of.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's got a color over yellow, but it's, it's this area up there.
Yeah, the black, but it's got a green overlay, okay.
Right, yeah.
Is the green different?
So what it's.
Yeah, what is the green, was that the bad?
The green is the stru.
So the, the green in here, in the, sorry about the color, but that is a planned roadway. And the black slash blue is the planned rec path. And what it's showing is it's dashed here because it does not, going from Williston Road into it, the path does not exist. Right up to Williston Road, there's an old defunct bridge that you can't use. And the road functions essentially in the driveway for the first couple hundred feet, you can go into the, 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 the Doubletree.
By the burnt area, yeah.
Once you get to that last driveway entrance to the Doubletree, it actually turns into a, something that looks like a road, it has curbs, it has limited access.
Hmm. Way.
It has street trees and then um to the left of it.
Um connects to the northwest.
Yes, to the, to the left of it is a rec path that does exist, so it, it becomes for all intents, I mean, it is a road, it's not publicly owned, but it's a road.
Yeah.
So that's why it's shown in here this way, we, we feel pretty good that that's the way it's shown, but they.
Yeah, and we think, I actually think we've ironed it out with them pretty well, but just throwing it out for your awareness and, you know, full transparency that.
What's your issue?
Just that they, it was a change and they were looking for explanation and so we had, went back and forth about the explanation about why and. What was going on and that it's official map and it's not something that's existing now and if, it would only be triggered if there was further redevelopment on the property, it was discussion.
Well, they wanna make sure they can build it.
No, no, during the road, it exists, right.
This, well, when they were.
And not to street standards.
Oh, path.
Like, just building something there now.
Yeah.
In different sections.
So there do, so there was previously a two-part plan by U V M and the hotel. For U V M to build substantial housing behind, like in the parking lot of the conference center.
Hmm.
And there's a hotel addition, the hotel addition is moving forward, but not the other one for now.
Okay.
The policy implication of this dashed line um is that if and when there was any substantive. Major redevelopment in this area, they would need to um plan for that to be a right-of-way for an actual road, which it is for the two-thirds. Uh away from um Williston Road and in a redevelopment, turn that into an actual roadway as opposed to the sort of driveway, half-driveway. Um they could still obviously use that as an access point.
It's a staple too, I think it's kind of confusing.
Right, and it gets used as a commuting route today.
First lane.
Mm-hmm.
It's.
For people leave the hospital, it happens all the time as they used.
Um.
Yeah.
I mean, it functions like a roadway in a lot of ways already today.
I think everybody thinks it's roadway, this seems like a good change to me.
Um, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Wouldn't this, my question is probably too late to change here that map, this now is, we've got, so we've got that new shared path you sway. Why exactly does the, you know, big expensive bridge path that we're building just kind of dead-end and not have the, like a proposed path that connected further like. Towards Burlington, like I know we only plans to build imminently, but why isn't like a proposed path, cause at some point, I assume we're not building.
Right, so we, we didn't necessarily tag things that are planned within the city right-of-way. Um so there could very much, very well be paths within the right-of-way. Um we, there is the beginnings of an effort taking place to design this part. Over in here about what paths should be, but we didn't feel like we were ready yet to place a legal encumbrance on the Staples Plaza. Because a uh official map is a legal encumbrance.
Okay.
Um because it means that they are aware that they're gonna have to give up additional land of the city and we weren't ready to.
Got it.
Say that just yet because there aren't really even high-level designs for what that would look like.
I wanna hope it's a thirteen B, yeah.
And the, and the, the geography is so tight there that that would, you know, create a lot of anxiety for them without a design.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, gotcha, thanks.
Um I did wanna flag one other thing that U V M had flagged for us, which we appreciate, which is that um. This is a blow-up of the draft official map. Um we failed to include this area right where I've got my hand as being added to the form-based code, which is being done in the zoning map. We, the boundary should have been updated in this map too, so we would just add.
So all that high-skill mixed-use area is now getting turned into form-based code.
Right, and so this map had just highlighted form-based code in the prior edition, so we just need to update the, the.
Just expand the boundary a little bit.
The light that gets matching the other one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, we see how this fits into the whole official map?
The citywide one?
Yeah.
So right now, the only um edits to the official map are in city center, but I can certainly bring up the city.
Well, okay, okay, that's fine.
There, there are no proposed changes outside and you know that there are some things that are outdated elsewhere in the city, but that's its own lift of a project that we didn't wanna have scope creep.
Just for the, what, the current date of effect of the current official map?
You can make a change to Rice to.
Where?
In the zoning map.
Where, where?
I mean, it is as of last time it was updated with the one twenty.
The zoning map, the official map, for these, I think.
Oh, okay.
Official map is showing plan overlay than another facilities, public facilities.
Last change outside of city center that was.
Got it, got it.
Okay, okay, one thing at a time.
The last change that was made outside of city center to the official map was to change from a planned road to a planned path across the Hill Farm to uh Swiss Street Extension. So that's the last time it was changed outside of city center.
So there are quite a few changes that are needed still.
It is on the work plan, but yes. Alright, go ahead.
No, Colin was just asking about the change to Rice High School and I said that was in the zoning map, that's a change to the zoning district, it is not a change to the official map. Cause the only thing on the official map is the um form-based code boundary. All the other zoning districts are, are not reflected and don't need to be reflected.
I suppose we can also take it out, but it's probably helpful, it's not actually needed on the official map to show it at all, it's just helpful for visualization.
That's helpful. Mm-hmm.
One minor clarification, the, I noticed that the Williston Road has that overlay for planned right-of-way, does, does that mean we're trying to expand the right-of-way of Williston?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Just the widening of the red.
So the planned right-of-way shows specific areas where the city, where, where the regulations have a intentional widening of an existing. Following a study that showed what we're.
Do we have a number like we're pursuing there for that width?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Happy to find it for you.
Yeah, no, it's not original, I was curious.
Yeah, so um other things that were in response to your comments from last time is. Uh correcting that medical and social services would be allowed as P T O in the industrial open space district effective that most affects Tilly Drive. Um updating childcare regulations to reflect the updated definition. Um updating master plan amendment and expiration language in fifteen B and can, and can, cleaning up some inconsistent language between article eight and article fifteen B about master plan review. Being available in the city center area as an elective um opportunity. And adding a cumulative, cumulative maximum of indoor and private facilities for site amenities of fifty percent of your requirement. So no building would be able to meet a hundred percent, more than fifty percent of their site amenity requirement by having balconies and an indoor, you know, rec room or something. You still need fifty percent that is met by other types.
Was that a change?
Um it was adding, it was adding a limit to the indoor, um to, in indoor and balcony and private balconies and other things. To make sure that people still have to do a, a parklet or an outdoor eating area or, you know, something similar. Still have some sort of gathering space that is fully outside.
And we had talked about it, um I don't know, at least a month ago or maybe even two months ago, but it hadn't made it in there.
No, I, I didn't remember the intention, I sort of, we were changing a pre-existing minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew.
No, it just wasn't, it wasn't cleanly in there and now it is.
Hi, any other thoughts or questions? So at our last meeting, we just had the air forum, um so, you know, we had talked about these things, but wanted to give. Kind of everyone a chance to ask any other questions and, and get these responses back and in, so. I don't know if anyone has anything else they wanted to talk over or think about or.
I looked at the red line, looks okay, what we agree.
Okay, well, um.
So we wanna warn.
Are there, well, let's see, is there anything from the audience, you can unmute or turn your video on? Brian, do you? Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Um I, I'm only caught something you said about red, redlined versions. Um is this the, the first item on your agenda that you are discussing still or about to vote on?
Um well, so, yeah, we're still on, I guess it's technically item five, um. Um, well, so, yeah, we're still on, I guess it's technically item five. Um, and then we would do the voting as part of our next item. So, yeah, we're still on that discussion item.
Um, I have a lot of comments surrounding the official map. Is that bundled in with that vote? Sorry for being late.
Uh, yes, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it is.
Um, all right, sorry, I just opened the computer, so I don't have the split screen working well for me yet. Um, but there are a number of things since I started talking about the official map. I think two and a half years ago now, um that there's a few things that have changed that I'm really excited about, like the um increase of paths cutting through the U-Mall, for example, which um was something I think we've long been needing. Um, but um in terms of promoting a downtown grid, I I still don't see that coming together. Um, I see the connection through the school property to Williston Road as a concern because uh the current intersections of Mary and Garden are about one thousand and ten feet apart. And we're trying to keep busy roads to intersections no closer than five hundred feet. But keeping in mind that our our intersections in this area are between a hundred and a hundred and forty feet of road length. Um, you know, that puts us below four fifty if we try to fit in another intersection there. Um, also, when you look at the kinds of um vehicle counts, um that promotes even longer distances than five hundred feet uh in cases. So I think trying to fit the grid going across Williston Road more is going to create more concerns. Rather, it'd be great to see if there was something running linearly parallel between Market Street and Williston Road. Um, between that little elbow of Garden um and um the green line. Um, I think that would be more helpful in creating a block with the Tilio Drive uh in the future if things change over with the school. Um, I know that there's a concern over not getting approval to extend San Remo North, which is why it was removed in the first place. Um, but I think in terms of something that's really critical to um advocate for as the city and our um legislative um representatives is to actually get a through connection there to promote um a good-to-honest grid. I think we could also ha- add a second block in the U-Mall area as well, even though we don't know how that will develop in the end. Um, the San Remo Drive now has a little connection stub for um shared-use path going into the school property. Um, there is a north parking lot there that exits onto Dorset Street and is very dangerous. Uh, I think creating a vehicular connection there would um support safety in and around the school campus a lot more. Um, the yellow tab going next to City Center Park, which would promote a sort of a low-density development there, I think is asphalt that doesn't really generate much usage as opposed to if you combined that stub of property in with what was on San Remo Drive for redevelopment. I think that gives you larger lots to work with and allows you to make better usage of um existing um roadway infrastructure. I've got, uh, just jumping in here last minute, uh, it it'd be hard for me to really articulate my points more than that. But um I would really love to see a little more work go into that and I could try to write them up and send them, but I realize you guys are expecting to vote on this tonight. But, so I'll cap myself there.
Um, one point to, I think, one of the early notes that Ryan had made about the planned roadway along um Williston Road. Um, that's on the current official map and the planning commission had given the guidance to make sure that it sort of stays stays straight as it goes today. Um, we do anticipate in a project that has been funded this year to be looking at the that's that tricky intersection at Mary Street, but where the traffic signal is actually for the um Delta Hotel and the businesses about eighty feet away from there. Um, so to to have a long-term plan for that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
Part of the scope of that is also to analyze what implications that might have and how we might wanna have a strategy for management of vehicles going east from there and whether that means access management or intersections and things like that. So um that we may uh in discussion with you, look to revisit that, this subject in another year, but to just take it off didn't feel appropriate yet either.
Mary Street's being opened right now, right?
Uh, it is not being opened. There's being a sidewalk built on it.
Ah, so no through anymore? No through uh to Williston?
At this time. Um, the prior city manager's commitment was that Mary Street would not be open to vehicular traffic until Garden Street was connected to Midas Drive.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not, um, that policy has not been changed at this time, but it's not been further discussed either.
Yeah.
But the sidewalk is under construction, which is great.
And the big yellow thing that goes through the school property, that's a planned street right-of-way?
So it's on the current official map. The reason it shows up, I think.
Because they might get redeveloped in a different way at some point in the future?
Right. Um, we we're not expecting, anticipating, um, other than it has been in discourse in prior history and so
Mm-hmm.
um, there's no harm in it being left on there. The reason it's highlighted yellow
Mm-hmm.
um, is the version that you saw a couple of months ago was where this big dash is. And um after an internal review, we thought if ever took place, that it's a more um appropriate to move it a hair to the right because it doesn't, um, this property up here is where the uh Dunkin' Donuts and behind it is um higher ground. Um, to cut the road right through the middle of the property creates a real challenge.
Mm-hmm.
And also on the south side, it goes right through the McDonald's as presented, but if we move it a hair to the right, it's through the drive aisle of it. So it's just um, just showing a little less of our goal of being to chop everything down.
Except the pizza place, no.
It it also avoids the pizza place. It just gets, just clips the corner of their sign, but not the, but not the drive.
This. This imagery you're showing on the screen is more clear than the, it got a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, the blah, yeah, I wonder.
Well. Yeah, somehow it showed up oddly.
Like the special part or something.
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this this seems very reasonable.
Plague of.
Right. So what I was highlighting is change from one dash to the other and the same thing over where we were just talking about.
Okay.
Up here, that was supposed to be showing a very slight, um, just that this had changed from prior drops.
So you've sat up in terms.
So it seems like um a few of the things that Ryan just brought up are gonna be talked about more this year with the funded study about Mary Street and then
Yep.
Um, I think maybe some of the other ones are kind of related to what Michael brought up, that there's other items that we really wanna examine on the official map, kind of in a bigger picture.
Yeah, the things that are currently changed in this round on the official map are primarily the ones that were affected or would affect how when we've reoriented the form-based code to to rely on the street type instead of the primary facade, secondary facade. It's now the facade that faces the primary street or a facade that faces the secondary street. So some of that required, you know, making sure that some of these things in, especially in the T-five, but in the outlying sort of tentacles into the T-four um, were really clear about what that meant. So that when we had the regulations change, you could say like, that means that if a building is built right here, this side would be this, this side would be that. So it's the core of what was changed in the official map this time is related to the larger form-based code project um, that was given to you all by city council last year.
And Ryan, I have a question about one of the things that you brought up. Um, it was about the blocks kind of within the U-Mall. And the way it looks to me, and maybe I'm not seeing this right, is that the northern block appears to have shared-use paths and the southern block appears to have planned roads. Was your comment related to that?
Um, yes, in part. Uh, I I'm most excited to see the addition of that dotted line at the top end of the U-Mall property. Um, that that was my preferred alignment for the bridge uh access in the first place. Um, that was left off the table. Um, in terms of the red line, I think we we already have a light signal um near the bank and Barnes and Nobles, and it would make a lot of sense to make sure that changes that happen in that area also have a block connection there if the connection, if the redevelopment happens in the right way. It's a little bit more encumbering because of where the um parking garage is and how less likely such expensive infrastructure like that is to be turned over. Um, but since there is already road, you know, passing by uh where Target is right now, I think it's reasonable to try to um wish for and encourage uh continuing block standard in that area.
I I think I understand as well as that that whole area is to the west of Dorset is, we're gonna revisit that at some point
Yeah.
uh in the near-ish future as we hear more from the developers also.
Yes, it's it's a very large property in the form-based code area. It would be it would be premature for us as planning staff and you as planning commission to draw lines on a map uh without further discussion of the future plans of the U-Mall because we want them to succeed and they want to succeed and we're going to figure out how to make that work for for everybody's benefit as the, as the community.
Do you, well, I guess just the thought that like, um, so from the end of Garden where it comes across, it's just the red line. Do you think that there's a benefit in having that be a red and a blue line to indicate that the shared-use path would also kind of make that connection from Garden Street up towards the north?
Yeah, it should have crossed the tree.
Because there there are a lot, all the other kind of major connectors have kind of the shared-use paths
Yeah.
as well. I mean, I know you've probably, yeah.
Here with it?
Basically, just just match the red with with the planned shared-use path.
Yeah.
With yeah.
With the blue, yeah, just to kind of, and I don't know if maybe just the sidewalk connection that would go along with the road is what we'd be assuming would happen there, but.
So if it doesn't show a shared-use path, then the policy would be that it is supposed to be a sidewalk. Um, on the north side of Williston Road, you'll see that there's a planned road and a planned shared-use path next to it. So what that's trying to show is one side of that road needs to be a shared-use path. Um, I I think at this stage of planning, that doesn't give me heartache to add that. Um, I think that's likely what the U-Mall would want to achieve anyway. And so for consistency, I I think we could add a blue line, match the red there and as a, as a planning attempt.
The, for kind of road, but it's open, no, sorry.
It would just mean that where, if there's in a redevelopment where that becomes an actual road, that one side of the road has a shared-use path instead of a sidewalk.
Mm.
That's what the blue line would mean.
Right.
So.
But redevelopment may well come in that area with structures.
I think that would be a good improvement.
It, as shown on the official map in some way, now they can move the, the lines can be moved on the official map um by the through the developer view process. But in a full redevelopment of the U-Mall, what this is saying is that a road, a proper road would need to be built in this area as part of the redevelopment of sort of creating a spine to that. Um.
A proper road, meaning a road with sidewalks, cause there is a proper road.
Right, right. No, no, a a a full, what we think of as road road, yeah.
Road with curbs.
Yeah, okay.
Curbs, street trees, et cetera, yeah, sidewalks. So um if that's what the commission would like to do, um, please.
Is is that vastly different from what the U-Mall owners have seen already?
It's just the red line.
I don't think that changing five feet of sidewalk to a shared-use path is going to make or break the U-Mall in any way either. Um.
Um, also, as we've mentioned, it's again, if we hear something from them in the next six months, we'll be looking at the official map again. And if they panic and wanna change it, then we should get.
Right. And and we'll let them know that that this change is taking place. And if they have concerns, then they'll raise, they can raise the next one. But I I don't think that this is order of magnitude.
Then they have a few weeks before the hearing.
It adds five feet to a right-of-way. I don't think.
As long as they have time to.
Yeah.
And we're not saying it has to be that exact red line. I mean, when they come in with a proposal, if it needs to be
I know.
two parallel roads, then we could approve that.
Have we heard anything from them about their plans?
We, there have been a few meetings recently with more high-level, we're thinking generally this and potentially this, but the timeline might be many decades and we, this might be our first phase, but it's just sort of a thought and nothing concrete.
I think in a general sense, are they still thinking of um commercial and residential?
Yeah.
Yes. In a general sense, they um are continue to be very aligned to the city's goals of creating a mixed area.
Mm-hmm.
Our.
Yeah, those are some times.
Yeah.
Um, the most concrete.
Sure, a million dollars.
The most concrete action that they've done recently that relates to all this is that they have engaged a design firm to be a- at at a minimum participating in this effort that you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And so they had not been in that place previously. So they they have a design and engineering firm that has communicated with Kelsey and I and shared some feedback. So they're they're paying attention to this stuff.
Yeah, so a few of the, just for, just for transparency, a few of the edits related to master plan and how it applies and in form-based code have come from some of their feedback about, well, this doesn't quite make sense. Can you make that term match that term because it all sort of fits together a little bit better? Like, there's a few things in there. Clarifying amendments, um, expiration dates, things like that that have come from those conversations.
Any idea how high they plan to go?
Fourteen stories.
They they know what we're letting, we are planning to let them do. We've not heard of it since.
Well, since they give us some comments.
So. Right.
Um, okay, anything else from the public? Anything else from the commission? Otherwise, we can, I'm gonna move us on to item six, which is the voting part. Okay, let's move on to item six, which is about potentially warning the amendments to the LDRs and the official map.
Well, I'll move the first proposed motion.
We need to actually read it or?
Okay.
Do you wanna read it? I move.
I think it would be good for the purposes of, to take minutes.
I move to warn a public hearing on amendments to the Land Development Regulations Number LDR twenty-five dash oh one through LDR twenty-five dash oh seven as presented uh for Tuesday, July, July, uh we, do we have any more changes?
We have to add, so we have to change that.
We have four edits. Do you want me to list what I wrote down to add?
With four edits. Okay.
Okay, I wrote down long-term facility definition. Article eighteen inclusionary zoning to refer to that long-term facility definition. The congregant care use would be a sub-use of that specifically for the inclusionary zoning location in the LDRs and the U-Malls, the different items. So it was only three items related to this motion.
To continue for Tuesday, July eighth, seven P M at City Hall and to approve the accompanying planning commission reports for each.
Awesome.
Those were unchanged from the previous meeting.
Okay.
Right, they they're great.
So Duncan seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
We are all present in person and unanimous. Okay, we have a second.
And I'll move proposed motion number two.
Yep.
I move to warn a public hearing on amendment to the official map. Number O M dash twenty-five dash oh one is presented um with the specific changes.
Um, to add a shared-use pass along the edge of the proposed road in the U-Mall.
For Tuesday, July eighth, seven P M at City Hall and to approve the accompanying planning commission report.
Michael, were you seconded?
Second.
Okay, second. Um, okay, any discussion on the motion from anyone?
Hooray.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Unanimous and all present in person? Oh, we did it. Good job.
Yeah.
Good job, everyone.
You waiting for something else to pop up?
Yeah, exactly.
Just acknowledge that great um work that um Kelsey do.
I'm like. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Steph.
Oh, all of the staff.
Both.
All all of staff, but it's just Kelsey. She's their face to us.
On the spot, on this one. The spokesmodel.
We had a lot of questions for you on that one. This was a big effort.
Yeah.
This was a big effort.
It's been a long time, right?
Brown.
When I realized that the UVM Educational Support Facilities tweak to the was in March, I went, oh my god. March eleventh, and I didn't feel like it was in the beginning. It wasn't, so.
Well, who knows? Maybe we're even gonna like reduce the number of patients of our LDRs.
Standing there.
But it's a lot of.
Paul's big goal.
It's a lot of definitions removed in this group.
Okay.
So, speaking, yeah, just the, cause we passed over that one paragraph and then, and. So speaking, yeah, just the, because we passed over that one paragraph and then, and for the people who weren't here at the last meeting. Um, I did draft up, there were some definitions.
Mm-hmm.
That were basically. Not current, they're basically from from documents that were published thirty years ago, almost thirty years ago. And referring to outdoor lighting. And so I offered to propose updated definitions. And as soon as I started doing that, I realized it had effects in other places. In the ordinance uh or in the L E L D Rs because. They've, and and that's that's one thing that I was very happy to see that this would be proposed as something that we would look at. In this next, in this, in this coming year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because, you know, I I found one of the few copies of this still exists. Um, in this good a shape, and because this was published in nineteen ninety-six.
Correct.
And 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 we have an entirely different technology today than what was discussed in there. And in twenty eleven, the Dark Sky Association in conjunction with the um Lumin Engineering Society. Um, wrote uh and approved uh a a very good model lighting ordinance. Which, you know, is available through the Dark Sky Association or anybody to adopt. Um, that basically changes. Changes kind of wholesale the way everything's defined. And the reason they do, and Kelsey, I sent you a copy. Of the presentation that Jim Benya did.
Yep.
Um, I think that was maybe five years ago. Um, so so. Vermont is pretty far behind on this topic right now, and at the time, when this was published, it was pretty far ahead. So we've we've kind of really dropped the ball on this, and I've been talking to people at Act two fifty and everybody in the state, it's like. You know, can we revise this and just adopt what the. Basically, a national organization has proposed that this is the appropriate way to do it. And there's just no money to do anything, and so I said, you don't need any money, you just adopt it. You know, and it would be very helpful if Act two fifty would adopt it first, you know, because then it would become, you know. It it basically is one document that because the uh individual communities can set their own. Um, lighting zones from zero to four, zero being no lighting, period, no. National parks, stuff like that, very no lighting. Most parts of um South Burlington would be level two. Um, but residential areas near the lake, probably level one. We would have no level three or four anywhere in Vermont, I think. And it basically makes it that simple, and then it basically defines not only what kind of lighting fixture. But how many lumens, because that's the whole thing that's missing right now. It's like, there's, there's nothing that says this is how much light you can provide. And one of the FedEx, that could have been become a real issue on FedEx, but. I happened to be at the meeting and I kind of personally intervened to say. You really don't want to follow what they're telling you to do here, and it was partly. South Burlington's ordinance that couldn't, didn't say that you couldn't do it. And FedEx saying, this is what we want because this is what we have basically at Newark Airport.
Oh goodness.
Yeah, and that's, and and we allow that. We would have allowed the same lighting in South Burlington that they have at FedEx at Newark Airport. You see the whales tails from miles.
I was thinking, don't we want to be like Newark Airport?
Yeah.
Right, and so just, just the kind of. You know, whole list of ways. That's why we need to really look at this and, you know, and possibly be the model for the rest of the state and just say, look. You know, we're trying to use national um. You know, national references um that has a simple way to do it. And, you know, define exactly what you want, not sort of what you want, but, you know, that has actual. Uh. Instructions on how how you pick fixtures that meet exact exactly what you're asking for.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the.
Can you find a town that has used the standard?
Yeah, actually.
Maybe we could look.
Oh, no, it exists. I mean, this, the ordinance has been written. Or adoption by any community in the United States, any place in the world, really. And it has been adopted mostly by places with um with um observatories. Um, because the old.
We've got one up the road here.
In Heinsberg, there's one.
Oh, there's one.
There's one in St.
The ones that have been spread.
Story of one at St. Mike's.
There's a, there's a pretty important one down in Springfield. And I, and I think they may have adopted it.
Could be a massive Springfield.
No, Springfield, Vermont, there's a, there's a significant observatory in Springfield, Vermont.
The golf ball in St. Albans.
Okay, okay, I keep, I keep getting slightly off.
So Donna, if if in your um world where you see this, you um come across any communities that are similarly scaled to us. That have adopted, that would be very helpful for us to be able to communicate with them and learn, you know, what, what have they learned from it.
Copy paste it in the brain.
Well, but also, you know, what's what's the administrative implications of having done it, because that's what we try to do is our homework on these things. So if it comes across, we'd love to.
Yeah, and just as noted in the memo, I did circulate it to our development review staff and P P W staff, and it was just determined that. It was, it's too big of a project for the timeline and that it was worthwhile pursuing in the next year, which is what I've put into the uh.
Yeah, it's, because it it does have, because it does have fingers that go into.
It goes to other regulations, it's it's a little bit more of a paradigm shift than just a changing of terms, um so. It was just, it was just a little too big. It's a little bit of education required.
I it it's definitely, I also, I I also personally quite interested, like, keep posting whatever you're kind of doing in there, I know. B trans is also hawking, we haven't, no, no decision made, but there's been some internal discussion on our lighting standards are. Have some shortcomings in certain areas and like, so the state highways also maybe looking at, so it's something I'm also interested in from that regard. Because for the same reasons, there's some places where it's underlit, some places where it's kind of overlit, it's when like. As an example, uh over in Essex Junction, uh they've installed so many bright luminaires uh outside of uh the. Beargrounds along Route fifteen, uh the town did. They were so bright that they ended up turning off half of them because the the light they installed.
They're getting ready to pay every night.
Yeah, but it was it was that reason, because it's the lighting standards are wonky, so I'm I'm saying like the state is. Don't know, this is all very like early stages, but it's something that, there's been some internal discussion, state level two, four, state highways, and I'd be curious how it relates to the dark sky.
Yeah, the, well, the the model lighting ordinance is for um private site lighting, it doesn't include roadway lighting.
Yeah. Yeah.
But there's a, there's another um RP eight, which is roadway lighting.
Yeah. But it relates to kind of like shared shared use paths, like if you exist in that, if I say anything, start ruining my talk.
There there are, there are, there are I S and A.
Nice job.
We'll get into it.
So um.
Every one of those categories.
So I think we, that we're really excited about talking about it, like when we get back to it soon. And I think we talk about the Act two fifty update?
Yeah.
Great.
Um, so I sent to you as a uh separate email from the packet, this uh this uh draft guidance that exists, I don't expect anybody to read all the text up here. Um, but the Land Use Review Board has statutes um that lay out um how tier one B and tier one A work. And the statutes also say that uh tier one A, which is full Act two fifty exemption for the applicable areas. Um, must be fully flushed out by the um by the Land Use Review Board, and then municipalities can, after the regional plan is adopted. Um, using the new maps can um choose to apply for tier one A status, and so um.
And that's what we decided we liked, right?
We're doing, we're doing.
Or was that fee?
Normally chosen one B, because that had to be done at this year.
B, okay.
One B is the fifty, up to fifty homes on ten acres or less. So that part has been submitted, we were the first community in the state to do it, Westford was the second, interestingly, Westford was the second.
Wait, they they have one B areas?
They, it is very, very small, it's about the size of Mary Street.
Some of the green in the middle.
The green.
Yeah. It's a partnership with Port.
Just a part of the green.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Part of the green.
Yeah, so. Especially part.
So this is the next part, and so for tier one A, tier one B is fairly straightforward in that. Um, the criteria are that it is shown as an area, um a downtown or an area planned for future growth. In the um regional plan and that as long as the municipality has a um confirmed planning process and regulations in place, that's it. Tier one A is a higher bar. Um, tier one A requires that the municipality. Um, make demonstrations that we have certain levels of standards in place, a little bit like how we've applied for our downtown programs in the past. But for a different purpose. So I was just gonna give tonight a little overview of what's in it. And where our regulations are likely already meeting it and things to be working on um over the next year. So um we have an adopted municipal plan, um we have a um downtown village center, planned growth areas, that's on the. Map that's already been submitted. Um municipality must have adopted flood hazard and river corridor bylaws. Um, for the entire municipality, um we are uh at the very front end of the curve on that um for municipalities in the state, so we are fully qualifying under that. Um, so that one, um if we're doing any tweaks, it's only to maintain our status of being at the forefront of it, but we already qualify. Um, the municipality has adopted permanent bylaws and subjective regulations that do not include broad exemptions that. Excludes significant land, um we certainly, um our regulations are comprehensive and cover our whole municipality, there are municipalities in the state where. That's not the case, so um we are covered there. The next one is a really interesting one, I, at this time, I think we are in very good shape on, but this one is one we're gonna have to dig into a little bit more closely. Um, municipality has permanent regulations that um further smart growth principles of um state statute. Um, have allowed for at least four stories in at least a portion of the area and conform to the guidelines established by the board. Uh, my understanding is that the board had a really interesting dialogue about how they were gonna deal with this one. Um, they considered the possibility of a checklist of, you know, you have block standards that say this and that you have a, you know. Lighting standard or whatever it might be, and instead they decided that there's enough variety in municipalities to make this. Give the municipalities the opportunity to show why they believe that they're meeting these smart growth principles. Um, I feel very good that we have good, very good regulations in place um and can create a really good narrative about this. Um, if as we start to get into it a little more fully over the next couple of months, we identify anything that seems deficient, we'll let you know, but. I think that this is um a reflection of all the hard work that you've done over the last many years to um to already accomplish this one.
In other words, you think you could make a really good case to.
I think that we are the case of why this should exist.
Well, that's good.
And I think we've, whenever we've gone to the state or or things like our our new town, our our designation here.
That is so good.
We are. Yeah.
We have gotten nothing but extremely positive feedback from the review boards that have existed. And that is not the case that every community who has applied for these things have got, so. Um, the next couple are ones where we will need to make some adjustments to our regulations, so um. The one is that there has to be some level of um regulation addressing historic sites and historic um structures. Um, and the other one is regarding uh specifically rare threatened endangered species. Um, I'm gonna talk about these together because they, even though they're very separate subjects, they have sort of a similar orientation. Rare threatened endangered species are regulated under state and federal law regardless, so um there are. Um, rules in place and through Act two fifty specifically to the rare threatened endangered. There's fifteen or twenty different species and they all have multi-page guidance as to what is supposed to be done with. The species or that species. Um. What uh, I've had a preliminary conversation with the Land Use Review Board member who is leading up this segment of this. And what they're um actively looking at and what they're doing a little bit of matchmaking between us and the. Municipalities in the state and themselves is to make a pretty simple and straightforward tool. Or or be in a position to approve a very simple and straightforward tool, where the municipality says. If there um, if a rare threatened endangered species appears on one of these state maps, then. The uh essentially the the applicant would be required to submit a report. Um, to the local DRB that follows the state guidance. The DRB would be empowered to uh hire a third-party technical review, um which is what we do on lots of um sort of unique cases. To review against those same state guidance standards. And um issue a, um, you know, the board would be empowered to then make a decision based on. That feedback that's been provided um and the application, so we would not be. Having to write pages and pages of developing our own standards, it would basically be pointing directly to the state standards that exist. Um, so I think that's a pretty straightforward way to look at this. I say this together with historic because historic really can fall into a very similar category. Um, we, it it's a little bit different because there's a little more policy choice in there. We don't have that many historic structures or um di- districts. Um, and the standard here is not that we have historic preservation of the handful of buildings per se. It is that new development is compatible with historic. And so um already they've taken some of our staff guidance to say that, you know, if the municipality has. Made um design regulations, including a form-based code, for example, that says this is the vision of how our community gets stitched together, that that could qualify. So we may have to add something, or we may, you know, as this guidance gets a little more developed, be able to say that our urban design overlay district on Shelburne Road. And our form-based code are achieving what we are seeking to do, so I think it, the. Big picture purpose of it is to be, give municipalities the responsibility to be thoughtful about what the character of new development looks like. In the context of whatever your history happens to be, whether you're, you know, Saint Johnsbury and you've got Bath and Am in the middle of it, or you're. Susie Wilson Road in Essex and you don't. Um.
You you mentioned if a rare and and threatened species appears on a map, which map, is it the A and A and R map?
There's a specific A and R map um that is maintained by them, um there is sort of a base level of um publicness to it. And then a much more detailed non-public version, because obviously it is not in a. Um, it is not in the general interest of the public to identify exactly where a plant is, because it might not appear there. Um.
It might go chocolate.
Interestingly, there's.
The pub, the public are big bubbles.
Right, so there's big bubble.
Like hundreds of feet wide at minimum.
And sometimes even more than that.
And sometimes mile or so.
It is, there's another way to address this, which is that the municipality could exclude all areas of rare threatened endangered species from tier one A, and then we don't have to do it. I've looked at the mapping and given that these things evolve a little bit over time and there's always better data. I could see a scenario where, you know, ten years from now, a rare threat, a a plant is found in an area that we otherwise assumed was. In in an area of development, if all of a sudden that is out of tier one A, that doesn't seem like good policy versus just if there, if that plant is there, then we have to. Um, then we have regulations in place to preserve it. That seems like a more forward-looking tool. There are not that many sites that I've found, I think I've found six in the city that were in areas planned for growth. Um, and most of those are pretty edge cases and actual research might not even show that they're there. But I think we're we're better positioned to have the regulations in place in the event there is one than to hope that there isn't one. Because that doesn't feel like good positioning for the city.
Yeah, so I was, so I started growing in city center park, that could be difficult.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and then the last two um are a little less on the regulatory side and a little more on the demonstration of our capacity side. So one of them is that we have water and wastewater, uh which we feel uh good about, especially with the uh water tank under construction. And then the last one um is we will, as a municipality, need need to demonstrate that we have the. Um, capacity to manage. All of this, so both our local regulations and also. uh all of this. So both our local regulations and also um reporting on existing Act two fifties.
Protecting the city right there.
Um, there is a responsibility that comes with with tier one A, which is that existing Act two fifties, when they come in for an amendment, um, the the DRB has to consider um what are relevant existing conditions. And also the city is taking on enforcement of existing Act two fifties in those uh conditions in those areas. So it's it's not a zero commitment. But it is um.
Quite a bit.
It it's it's quite a bit, but also um a lot of Act two fifty is directly overlapping what we already do. And so it's not one plus one equals two. It is frankly, you know, most of what is determined in Act two fifty is things that they've already gotten approval for locally. So we are already doing that to a large extent. But we'll take it all seriously and um, you know, and we'll, our intent and plan is to spend some time on this this summer so that the council has um any reasonable estimates about what this might uh uh mean in terms of um resources in the city in, well, benefit, but also financial commitments on behalf of the city for the future fiscal year.
I think is it another half-time staff or?
Right, or not, right? But I think trying to help them know what that is so that they're going in eyes wide open is really important.
What's the timeframe? We we just did one B.
Right, so the window for applying for one A is anticipated to open next July. So we cannot apply until the regional plan has been submitted and approved.
Not this one.
Hmm.
Their schedule for submission and approval is next, early next summer.
Could that, it won't affect the budget till FY twenty seven?
Correct, which means that the next three months is really good timing for us to start to give the council some numbers so that they know for the next fiscal year what that would look like.
I know we've done it before. The key benefit of one A, tier one A.
The key benefit of tier one A is that um we are eliminating redundancy in a development review process in a community that has paid so much attention to what we do in terms of what we're looking for in regulations. Act two fifty is repeating a lot of that. And so it is um removing a layer while making sure that we're regulating all the things that are for ourselves.
Question.
Does that include all the nine F?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, well, just I just wondered, um, does some of the stuff that I know, just as I've I've gotten involved in some of these things, have the nine F criteria? And some of those involve um current energy efficiency best practices. And the other one that gets very involved with Act two fifty is lighting, outdoor lighting, is a very big one that they review. So it's gonna be good timing.
Yeah.
So so in tier one A, for the areas planned for growth, it it is a full Act two fifty exemption. Um, so all um all things that will be regulated in Act two fifty, um it's our choice.
Well, that's the.
It, we have to meet the min, the the minimums that I just went through and anything else is our choices, municipality.
But but I'm just saying that, you know, two, two of those issues that have been really big deal in the past.
Right, now the 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 statewide residential and commercial energy code applies regardless of Act two fifty. So that that standard applies um and our local regulations we've adopted that um do the stretch code to the extent that it exists still apply.
Right. Right.
Um, lighting is a, is a good point. Um, but.
Uh, yeah, cause the light, lighting is not covered in.
As a practical matter, I'm not aware of many, if any, circumstances where an Act two fifty application has come back to us to change the lighting based on um a decision made by the Act two fifty board. Maybe lighting levels, because that wouldn't be something that we would see come back to us, but I've not seen a case of coming back.
I I think it's because the scale of the projects, you know, typically the scale of the projects, you're dealing with engineers who know, who know, you know, how to do this stuff. So.
Right. I think that's a really good point though, because one of the things that we have been um looking at in our regulations is are there things that people have been designing to an Act two fifty standard? And so we've just seen a better product as a result of that. Um.
And if they think, oh, we don't have to do that anymore and if they look at our, and if they look at our lighting ordinances, there's a huge gap.
Right, so that's something we can certainly take into account. I think that's, that's a good example of that. Another one that we dealt with uh a year ago in anticipation of this was we didn't have a specific threshold for vehicle trips to do a traffic study. So we always relied on the act, on the V Trans standard of seventy-five trip ends per uh affected intersection. But nothing in our regulations said that. We now say that. So similarly, we can, we can cover things like that.
Do you think that um maybe sometime in the next year, we could set aside some time to go through each of the criteria, like what it is? And if we have an equivalent kind of a thing locally?
Yeah.
And I know once you get down to like municipal plan and um, you know, the regional plan, like obviously wouldn't even be allowed to do this if it doesn't meet those, but but the other ones, like up through through nine, so.
For Act two fifty, those criteria.
Yeah, the the those I'd be like, cause I know some of them, like we're meeting, like we have our reporter, we have the flood regulations, we have, you know, wetlands, we have.
So.
Like, you know, I think some of them are just like, oh yeah, we're doing that. Um, but just to kind of, is there something we're missing? Like Donna just brought up, maybe the lighting is something we want to.
So we can absolutely do that. We've actually done that analysis as part of, as the legislature was looking at all this. We provided some testimony alongside um Burlington and Winuski about um doing that side-by-side comparison, so we can do that with you. Um, just keep in mind why I want to start with tonight's presentation is um it is, there was lots of different iterations of this talked about at the legislature. Ultimately, tier one A, if a municipality has um regulations that meet what tier one A criteria call for, that's the standard. That is, we are not required to demonstrate to the land use review board that we are equivalent to Act two fifty. So that is our own choices that we can make about what we wanna do as policy, but it's not mandated to us. We don't have to prove that we are replacing Act two fifty.
No, I get that. It was more for like our comfort level, the council's comfort level, like are we giving up some level of review on certain things?
Yeah. Yeah.
We want to at least think about.
Yep, yep. So we can, we can absolutely do that, just being aware that these are the choices that we can make as a community. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, we have.
Could you remind me what those areas for planned growth are that could qualify for tier one A?
Sure. Um, they are the um the downtown and the village designation, so uh Shelburne Road area, city center. They are the planned growth areas. Um, what they're not is the rural areas and the enterprise areas. So in South Burlington, we, it is pretty closely aligned to where the adopted sewer service area is. So anywhere that you allowed sewer service area falls into one of those categories. Anywhere where you said sewer service is not to be allowed, i.e. um uh you know, the NRP and um the extended connected habitat blocks in southeast quadrant and river corridors would be not eligible. There's a couple of other areas. Um, enterprise, which is isolated business areas under the legislation, don't get to qualify. So like Ethan Allen Industrial Park behind the airport. Um, I'm not aware of any tin acre lots back there anyway, so they, they don't have to go through Act two fifty now. And the airport itself, because the airport doesn't fit into any of these neat categories. I think that there may be some legislative adjustments in a future year to um think about some of these business parks and whether they should or shouldn't be allowed to be exempted. The orientation in the statute was really towards the subject of housing, so there wasn't a lot of attention paid to things like business parks behind airports. But that's, that's the, and then what the municipality chooses to apply for is whatever subset of that it wants to. Including all of it or less than all of it. That's it.
Does that get made part of the FLU, the future land use map?
So it is, the maximum area is from the future land use map. That determines what can be eligible. The municipality could say, as Westford did, only the north side of their green did they want it. I.
Westford.
I'm, what I don't know about Westford could still.
The store. The store.
Is that what they said? Really? Just the north side of the green?
Very funny one in the town.
The north.
The north and the east side, but not the south or west side is where they want a tier one of these status.
Oh, that is the opposite of what I thought you were saying.
Hi.
But I don't know about Westford could fill.
Any question or discussion about this?
No.
It was great.
Thank you, that was good.
And thank you for testifying as part of it. I mean, I think that's how we get good legislation, by, you know, having you all involved in the process.
Oh, and Paul is highly appreciated and respected, so.
I appreciate that, and I didn't know what adjective you were gonna use after the word highly, so I'm thrilled that you fixed that one.
Highly something.
It's highly something.
Okay, uh, oh, there's minutes, minutes.
I like to.
Minutes. All right. I'll move to approve the South Burlington Planning Commission, minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, as written.
Okay, um, oh, second, on fa, on your discussion, hey, on favor?
I'm.
It's near.
You are allowed to vote, are you?
I will vote for it in my bedroom, yeah.
Okay, you end this, great. Any other business? Are we doing all our July meetings? I know some years we like, so one.
Oh, that was the twenty fourth.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, related, but not exactly the same. Um, moved the hearing for the July eighth, and that works out with notice requirements and and other things. Um, we have landed in a place where we've sort of finished a bunch of different projects at the same time and are kind of kicking off a bunch of things at the same time. What that ends up meaning is we don't have a lot to put in front of you for the June twenty fourth meeting. Um, because we're sort of getting our wheels going for a handful of things. Paul and myself and Nick are all kind of in the same position. There's nothing kind of ongoing at this point. Um, so we would.
Offer to.
Offer to skip June twenty fourth.
Oh.
As a. Celebrate Saint John Baptist Day.
There you go.
Uh, I probably actually have to miss the twenty fourth anyway. I'm doing a training thing, so.
Well, there we go.
Done. Is anybody deeply upset to miss your next meeting?
Oh, no.
Okay. So Tim, you're upset to miss the June twenty fourth?
No, I I'm gonna come anyway.
Great.
Let us know what goes.
Yeah, good.
Did you send the email detailing the fact that Slater Braverman opened the new building for rental?
I did not, so that's a good um added uh note, everybody. So um three, three, nine Garden Street, which is
Right.
Over here.
Just.
The residential building um on Garden Street as you go north on the left side, um just opened a few, a couple of months ago. Um, the property owner has let uh let us know that that has been made available to the general public. Um, so there was some previous discussion, or previously our understanding was that was gonna be reserved for UVM affiliated folks like some of the other buildings, but they have just um let us know that that building is available for the general public, which is really exciting. We're thrilled to have the UVM affiliated folks and UVM MC affiliated folks joining our community, but giving a wider cross-section availability is just gonna make us that much older.
Is that the building where Bliss Bees?
No, it's the one behind it.
Oh, the one behind it, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you click the link and look at the samples for playoffs, the two bedrooms, they start at about twenty seven fifty a month.
Yep. Wow. For two bed, two bath.
Yeah, and I don't like the nice units.
Yep.
Out market, yes.
So the layout is actually pretty.
Crazy, that's.
So so much for Collins begging for it, if he's first, but small apartment center is kind of.
Well, we can't force the market.
Next one, next one.
Anything else there business? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thanks for a lot.